I just.
You didn't start.
Good evening and welcome to tonight's Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, Wednesday, September 24th, 2025. First on the agenda is approval of our last minutes. This turned out to be a relatively quick meeting.
Couple, four minutes?
And yeah, you guys have a chance to look over that?
Didn't take long.
Didn't take long, no.
I'll move to approve.
Have a motion.
Second.
In a second. Okay, Rich?
Hi.
Hi, Sue?
I was absent.
Joel?
Hi.
Next one.
I was, I, yeah, abstaining, but I was absent from the meeting, so I couldn't.
Okay, next on the agenda is public comment where the members of the public can speak to the commission regarding matters not on the agenda nor currently pending before the Planning and Zoning Commission. Didn't know if you wanted to pop up there and say something, or you've got the only one, huh?
This is just too complex.
Got the whole thing. All right, fair enough. We'll go on to number three for the 2025 Area of Impact Agreement to review and reestablish said area. Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So yeah, we're going to discuss area of city impact. And last time the agreement was updated was 2019. There've been some changes in state code requirements, thus why we're here discussing this tonight. So Idaho Code 67-6526 requires establishment of an area-city impact throughout the state. So all counties, local cities are required to establish area-city impact. Includes the adoption of a comp plan and land use ordinances to apply within the area to allow for the logical and orderly growth of the city into the county. So last year, Senate Bill 1403, so there's significant changes to area-city impact requirements in Idaho code in that section. And at the end of that statute stated there was a deadline for bringing pretty much everybody's area-city impact agreements into compliance by the end of this year. So we've been working with the county staff on a revised ordinance slash agreement to bring the existing agreement into compliance. And I just thought I'd go through, kind of, I mean, we've probably all heard this a few times, but kind of good just to go through kind of the entire history of area-city impact ever since the first ordinance showed up in 1979. The first was mutually adopted. ACI agreement was adopted by the city and the county in 1993. And then there was a Supreme Court case of Idaho in 2000, blah versus Eagle City Council, essentially stating that the city cannot, cities cannot have extraterritorial authority, so just advisory. And so the county at the time was pretty much relegating all authority to the city at that point. And that was the gist of that Supreme Court case. And that's how we functioned here in Leittau County. So in 2003, the county was sued by Utsman, which results in an existing area-city impact agreement deemed unconstitutional by the district court. And then through 2004, 2006, the county and the city execute a renegotiated agreement, which is then renegotiated again in 2006. And you can see what we had previously. So this is a little bit outdated city limits boundary here we currently have. But 1993, you can see how large that boundary was. And typically with area-city impact, you're just looking at, you know, areas that are expected to grow, the city's expected to grow into in probably 15, 20 years, not 50 years. And so that was drastically reduced to the purple shade of line boundary. And that was 2004, 2006 boundary there. So you can see that was significantly reduced. And then just for fun, threw in some details of our current city limits and then what various points in time look like as far as our city limits boundaries. So I think this is 19, or 1891? I think. 1910 and 1930. So you can see, I mean, we have relatively, traditionally had about 1.25% annual growth rate. And so, you know, just looking at that amount of years that it would take to grow into an area-city impact boundary, you can see just by these years how long it's kind of taken us to get to these points. So. And then in 2015, so typically you update the agreement about every 10 years. And so 2015 kind of initiated that since the last agreement was 2006. We held a joint meeting with the county to discuss renegotiations. The council decided to wait until zoning code and comprehensive plan updates were completed because we were currently going through fairly substantial updates. You recall like the use table and items like that within the zoning code as well as some comp plan updates. And then in 2018, we began, became, began, excuse me, jointly drafting an amendment to the agreement in the fall after significant zoning code amendments were approved and comp plan update was nearing completion. And then February 20th, 2019, the updated agreement was executed. Looking at what that contained, the city's comp plan and future land use map, city subdivision, manufactured home, RV park ordinances, and then our zoning ordinance with the following modifications, portion of the nonconformity section that the county wanted adjusted, flood hazard areas, we adopted their requirements because they were more restrictive. And then planning developments, we just eliminated that section because if you were going to do a PUD, we want you to annex into the city. So those were the amendments. And then urban agriculture. So at the time, we allow urban agriculture all pretty much entirely through the city. And so there was more restrictive requirements in the area-city impact. And so we wanted to adopt those there. Didn't make any sense why you could have a horse in the city, but you couldn't have a horse in county in area-city impact. So just making that consistent. And then the ag forest zone, which is the largest zone, about 88% of the area and area-city impact currently is ag forest. So we wanted to amend, adopt, essentially adopt the county's ag forest zone with a few amendments, deletion of salvage wrecking and junkyards. We didn't want those in the city in the area-city impact. Animal husbandry and all uses normally associated with raising, feeding, selling livestock as permitted, as a permitted use, reducing from 250 animal units to 50 animal units within that area. And then we amended the county's ag forest zone. As you may recall, the county's ag forest zone, countywide, it used to be that you had to have 40 acres before you could divide a parcel off and go through a lot division. They reduced that, want to say about 10 to 12 years ago, down to 10 acres parcel size in order to divide at least one acre parcel off. That's partly a result of why you see so many houses showing, you know, showing up in the county at this point. It's the reduction and from the 40 acre minimum parcel size. So we wanted to keep that within the area-city impact because we didn't want further development fragmentation of that area that which is going to prevent the logical and orderly extension of the city into the county. So. So this was the, or currently is the area-city impact zoning map. You can see 88% zone ag forest. So that's that green shade. The gray is all the land currently in the city limits. You have just pockets of, so industrial and then motor business here on 95. This is kind of the portion of the fountains property, parcel out here. And then there's a development over here, southeast sewer district, Carmichael, Lenville, that contains some multifamily developments out there. So there's pockets of like R4, R1 suburban residential designation in that area, as well as a few different zones out here on North Polk Extension. So taking a look at what changed this last year. So, you know, as I mentioned previously, about every 10 years, the governing boards were required to take a look at the area-city impact and whether or not renegotiation was in the best interest of the citizenry. So with this change with Senate Bill 1403, counties and cities shall now review the area every five years to determine modifications are needed, to confirm existing boundaries, may pursue modification of an established area impact more frequently than five years. So pretty much saying five years, but take a look at that sooner than that if you want. Prior to conducting the public hearings required under the chapter to establish, modify, or confirm an area-city impact, cities and counties should work together to develop the proposed area of impact to be considered at a public hearing. So that's what we've been doing up to this point is trying to work through this and to bring ourselves up into compliance by the end of the year. The previous code allowed for a kind of a mutually agreed upon process for that renegotiation. Really could follow any timeframe, as you can tell from the history that I provided. I mean, it was over a course of three or four years that we had those zoning code changes and went through that to arrive at our 2019 agreement. So now the code's now really detailed as far as the process, which requires proper noticing. So the county shall provide 30 days written notice to the city of the hearing of the proposed ACI modification. 15 day days has to be provided to every property owner within the proposed area-city impact. And now the authority lies solely with the Board of County Commissioners through ordinance adoption. And so, you know, it's pretty much shifting power almost entirely to the county with this Senate Bill 1403. It used to be that there were public hearings that we would go through for the county, for their planning commission and Board of County Commissioners. And then we would go through planning and zoning for a public hearing and then city council for a public hearing. And at that point, we'd enter into the agreement for the area-city impact. And now essentially it's solely up to the Board of County Commissioners. They give the city 30 days written notice that the public hearing is going to be conducted. We were able to submit input, you know, up to this point, we've already discussed this with them and tried to work, work it out prior to this point. But there's no obligation that, you know, we're even here tonight discussing this per the current code. So. And then it specifically states they're not even required to receive a recommendation from the county Planning and Zoning Commission either. So, you know, just not the city, but the county as well. Looking at the prior geographic area of area-city impact was generally guided by a few different considerations. And they were trade area, geographical factors like rivers, mountains, hills, steep topography, things like that. Areas reasonably expected to be annexed in the city in the future, but kind of left it wide open, never really stated how many years into the future, just into the future. So that was fairly broad. And now they've come up with five of those categories to guide the considerations. The first one is anticipated commercial and residential growth, geographic factors, so carried that one over, transportation infrastructure and systems, including connectivity, areas where municipal or public sewer and water are expected to be provided within five years in other public service district boundaries. Then going through additional requirements, can't exceed the areas that are very likely to be annexed to the city within the next five years. And it shall not extend more than two miles from the existing city limits boundary. And it can't divide county-recognized parcels of land. And then there's a exemption there. So if only a portion of a recognized parcel falls within the two-mile limit, then the boundary may extend beyond two miles on that parcel so that it encompasses the entire parcel. And then adjustments to an area impact may be proposed and considered at any time following the initial establishment of the area impact. So brings us to kind of the existing. So we have existing city limits boundary. That is the darker shade. The lighter shade is the area-city impact boundary that we currently have. These parcels are included. And then the medium shade of green is what we have proposed as adopting the boundary. And kind of zoom into these different areas. So this is the north here. You know, what's largely affected this is looking at those, I mean, we have to look at the areas that are reasonably expected to be annexed within five years. And we can't divide a parcel, split it in any way. So, you know, formerly we have these parcels here, which, yeah, this is probably reasonably expected to maybe be annexed in five, 10 years. But this parcel goes all the way up here, which is fairly unreasonable. So that's not allowed anymore. So these kind of fragments that we just split county parcels in half or a portion of it, we can't do that, you know, or we have to justify pretty much including the entire parcel. And so that's really the adjustments that we've made.
So that parcel goes up to Foothill Road? Is that what you're saying?
It goes, yeah, it goes, I think, further than that.
Oh, you're talking about the little square on the right?
Yeah. So that, so, yeah, for instance, this is just a portion of this bigger parcel.
I see.
And now we can't split parcels per the state code here. So same would apply here to this property and then.
You're saying the lightest green went away.
Lightest green is what we currently have that we're planning on.
That we have to.
Eliminating because of the requirements, yeah. And then same thing, looking at the sound, I mean, not a substantial number of changes. It's just we have like the Jensen property here. I mean, this property, so this is Somo subdivision that just got annexed and platted here, the business park. It's probably likely that, you know, maybe five years, they're going to annex a portion of that property. It doesn't prevent that from happening. It just says that, you know, this portion can't be in an area-city impact anymore or else we need to include the entire thing. And this, you know, entire thing.
That's all one big parcel?
It is. So it goes all the way up here to the top of the hill. And so that's what, you know, a lot of these areas, so like Old Pullman Road, same thing, property over here, it's probably highly unlikely that's going to be annexed in the next five years.
That's what's making all this brown is that that's a wholly owned piece of property, are you saying? Why isn't there any area of impact there near Sand Road?
We're, yeah, I mean, we're not, so we're pretty much, this is the current area-city impact is a lighter shade and we're proposing to eliminate that. All this area is currently.
There's no water up there anyway.
Is currently not in the area-city impact.
And why?
Very unlikely.
Very unlikely, yeah.
Very unlikely it'll be developed.
In the next five years.
We just don't have utilities to that point.
I never will off by Old Pullman Road.
Yeah, until, you know, you start to continue the subdivisions and you start to develop up the hill and bring utilities up there. We're never going to annex any of these properties.
Did that affect your, the, your development at all? So you're saying that, just clarify a little bit about utilities, difficult for sewer, you mean?
Yeah, sewer and water to be able to get to those points. Yeah. So now the, I mean, the threshold is the, you know, we have to reasonably expect that we're going to be able to give water and sewer to those properties in five years is essentially what we're saying.
And did the, did the Schweitzer development impact this in any way?
It didn't, no. I mean, they annexed the entire property, you know, same with Eddington property. So this was the prior area-city impact went all the way down here. But these two properties were annexed. And so now, you know, it's, it's going to be probably greater than five years to get, you know, to get to this.
It might be an old man.
Get to the top. It's going to take a while.
So that's why, yeah, we don't have any area-city impact shown beyond where we have it shown right here. So moving on, previously comp plans and ordinances when the area-city impact could be.
I just have a background question. Who sponsored the need to re, look at this more carefully and write up this new code? Where did that come, what part of the state did that come from?
Well.
In other words.
I haven't researched this extensively, but yeah, it's my understanding that, I mean, that was probably largely around the Treasure Valley and Boise area. I mean, you have a lot of, you have the county, then you have a lot of cities that are growing into each other.
And the money is there in the Treasure Valley.
A lot of cornfields.
Afford to have suits. Yeah. I was just curious whether anything ever comes out of East Idaho or.
Yeah, you know, I didn't, I can't recall who sponsored the bill when it went through. Pretty sure you could easily look, look that up. I did recently see Valley County and McCall renegotiated theirs. And I think it was, said it was reduced by 93% of the area. So I think you probably had some conflict going on there as far as, yeah, city growing into the county and kind of control over that area. So interesting.
So I was looking at Old 95 that's now blocked off. And I thought that that would be developed commercially. And, but now the county could say, well, we don't want the city to have any of our industrial tax base, property tax base. So we're just not going to let you do it. That's part of, I mean, because we've been eating into the county and, and then, you know, their, their property tax base, especially industrial or commercial gets made smaller. So, but what's, what you're looking at on Old 95, you haven't even gotten that far. There's just, that's just out in the county. And if that gets developed, that's just going to be all wells?
Yeah, unless they annex into the city. So we have city utilities pretty much extended to the entrance of Schweitzer, their single building there. And so, you know, eventually we'll extend it further south on Old 95 and we'll be able to connect. But yeah, currently, you know, there, this parcel's currently being developed. This is just north of Early Bird. So this is.
I was going to say, yeah.
The property just north of that and they're building, they don't need a well or septic because they're building storage facility, self-storage facility on that property. And then the other properties, Wass and Carey here.
Yeah.
Monday's.
But that's, that's in the area that's in our current, or it's in proposed?
The, yeah, this is, this is all currently in our area city. So there's no changes really over here. It's just over here on the Jensen property is the only change, just because it splits the parcel in half. But everything's staying the same here on the old corridor. You know, this was, this large portion here was annexed as part of the Somo development. So they needed to connect to city limits. They were essentially an island. So we needed to annex ITDs right away as well as a portion. There was Nathan Wass and Carey's property, which is just north of Doug and Melanie Wass and Carey's.
Each property is the white green that is in.
Crosses three different parcel lines.
This?
No, a little to the left of that, just that, yeah, that little thing.
Uh, that's ITDs right away.
Oh, okay.
So this is all Thorne Creek right away. This is just a, yeah, I'm sure these, these parcel lines probably have gone away at this point, but they just haven't been reflective in the county's parcel.
I did look it up to see, because I was curious on who potentially sponsored it. And it was Senator Todd Lakey, which is from District 23, which represents Wahi County, parts of Ada and Canyon. So.
Wahi County is a little, little known place unless you watch outdoor Idaho, you've never heard of Wahi County.
Celia Bowlin owns a pretty big section of it, little bit outside Orianna. That's the only person I know who owns any property.
Any other questions or comments on the map here? All right. So previously, within the area-city impact, the county and the city could agree upon essentially anything. So it could be the county's plan and ordinances, could be the city's plan and ordinances, or it could be any other combination of the above that they mutually agree upon. Now, the county's comp plan, zoning and subdivision ordinance have to apply in the area-city impact. And so it's restrictive there. We can't adopt the cities like we currently have within the area-city impact. It has to be the counties. But we may be able to adopt individual county comp plan, zoning and subdivision ordinance provisions regarding a specific area of impact. So we're able to make some modifications, but we have to make those to the county's zoning and subdivision and, and land use maps. So this is the comp plan. So essentially what the code's telling us is that we have to go back. And so previously we had the city's comp plan that was adopted and area-city impact. Now, these have to be pretty much assigned land use designations that are the counties. And so we've gone in and essentially assigned the equivalent. So typically you have auto-urban residential is a lot of this yellow shade here. And so that is now rural, I think, is what they, they refer to it. And I printed off, kind of got like a, you know, a narrative of each, these different land use designations. We can go through if you have any questions. But essentially, it's just the equivalent of what we currently have in these areas that the county has in their comp plan. And so that's what we've gone through. Rural is what we call agriculture, forestry and residential, which is a kind of a unique mix. But they allow higher density residential development within that district. And that's why you see that designation over here where we have those pockets of R4 out there on Carmichael. And then ICR is industrial, commercial and residential. So those are kind of the catchall for industrial, commercial areas. And then the rural is kind of composed of less productive agricultural and forest lands with low-density residential development, not directly related to agriculture.
So an interesting thing that the blue lines are city-owned streets, huh? Or I'm noticing that the streets in the university aren't shown, right?
Those are parcels, I believe. Yeah, I think those are parcels, what those are.
So those are the streets.
University owns the whole chunk.
Because no, no parcels. That's the deal.
University's big.
Yeah. I think we've got some gray, I mean, there's some gray for the streets. You can see in there.
But that's, they have.
Yeah, I was thinking with streets, but those are parcels. I get it. I get it.
I mean, that's mainly Greek row while you have that.
Yeah.
That's the only industry we have is gathered in the brown. That's, that's all we have going, huh?
Hey, and there's, and the only productive is way in the north.
In the area impact.
Way in the north above the screen or, yeah, and one little section is productive.
Yeah, apparently that's our only productive agricultural ground here to the, to the north. Surrounding, Rich?
Yeah, I don't believe it.
And then the zoning map. So, you know, as we had gone through before, primarily ag forest. And so that's not changing. We've already adopted the ag forest zone within our current area-city impact agreement. And so, you know, not a whole lot is, is changing with adopting the county's zoning designations. They're just called something slightly different. And so, you know, I've gone through each of these designations, but it's. And so, you know, I've gone through each of these designations, and it's fairly comparable to all the uses, uh, that we currently allow on those properties. And I think talking to Michelle at the county, who's done the most amount of work on this, it sounds like they're not going to create really any non-conformities for any of these properties in the area city impact is what it sounds like. So, um, but yeah, you have, we got kind of zoomed in area, but ag forest, commercial, industrial, rural residential, and suburban residential.
So up on Old Pullman Road, you've got three different colors, four different colors. Can't tell if it's beautiful. Three different colors. Very close together.
Yeah, well, you have the Mobile Home Park there.
And that's, that's SR?
Yeah, and so that's more their R four, like multifamily type designation is SR. Uh, and then it transitions to rural residential, which is probably equivalent to maybe R two.
There's not a whole bunch of, that looks like there's a whole bunch of lots there, but there's not.
Well, they're platted, but they haven't been developed. I think that's Carl's, uh, property there with Pluse Properties. Think he had platted that subdivision at one point in time, but never, uh, developed it.
Couldn't get any water. Okay.
Do you think our, uh, are you, uh, feel that our relationship with the county is operating pretty nicely?
It is.
It seemed to me. I, I was impressed last year when we had, when you had that, um, planning conference. Just, I, I really, I, I didn't feel any, uh, irritations or resentments at all when I was dealing with county and the city, so. I feel like it's really in pretty good shape.
Really good, yeah, we have a very good relationship with them. Discuss things all the time.
I think that's admirable.
Yeah, after you go to, you know, planning conferences throughout the state, you really understand that, uh, we have, do have a, kind of a unique relationship just because it's so good. And, uh, just depending upon where you're at, you know, it's.
But I felt, uh, you know, I don't know how Joel would feel, but it, maybe twenty or so years ago, I felt just a little bit more edginess. And as we were fussing with, uh, area of impact and what have you. And I feel like that's gotten, uh, quite a bit better. So I, I'm just, I don't work with the same people, but I, I don't, uh, sense, I, I thought they, going to the conference last year was quite a, quite, uh, useful, I thought. Just to, because it also helped understand the pain and suffering that people, uh, little towns out of the, uh, or go through. You know, I mean, you just, your heart goes out to the people in dairy who are trying to get organized occasionally and, and can hardly imagine how to do it. We're so, uh, much like as a, I think our attitude here in Moscow is more like a, perhaps a larger metro area. I think we, maybe we have it slightly different. That's good. Anyway, great, wow, this is good, Mike, thanks.
I'm not done yet. Uh, so that brings us to.
I should have known.
Yeah, the agreement. And so, this is very much structured like we have the current agreement. So there's area definitions, governing plans and ordinances, administration, enforcement, conflict with other ordinances, and renegotiation sections. I'll just go over a couple of those, but, uh, the adopted plans and ordinances. So as I've mentioned previously, we have to adopt the county's plans in, in these areas. County comprehensive plan and future land use map, uh, that we just looked at. And then the county land use regulations and fee schedule. So much like we currently have with the ag forest zone, we'll be carrying that over. So, um, you know, this was one, since we have so much ag forest within the area city impact, uh, it's not a real big change here because we're just going to, we already have the ag forest zone of the county's adopted within that area, so we'll just do that again. So we've got ag forest zones for the county. We're going to delete, uh, the portion about salvage wrecking junkyards. And then the, from animal units for the animal husbandry uses. And then the parcel size, forty acres like we currently have. So retaining all those items there.
So what happens? So it looks like salvage wrecking and junkyards could previously be in with the CUP, and now you're deleting that?
Yeah, it's currently, currently deleted. It's just in the county's ag forest zone, which pretty much covers a large portion of the county. Through a CUP, you can have a salvage wrecking and a junkyard. But we don't want that use in the area city impact, so.
So what has that do to Wasson Carey? Because that's basically salvage is what he does.
I mean, he's having, has a historic use there. And so, you know, that would either make him non-conforming. We haven't, I guess, looked into that use, what we would classify it as.
Because that would definitely affect him selling his property or his business. If you've just eliminated the possibility of him legally being there.
Well, he's legally there now.
Right.
Existing non-conformity.
It's a.
Right, but if he goes to sell it.
Well, still existing.
Is it?
Yeah.
Okay.
So he has rights, it's legal non-conforming use. So, um, as long as that's not ceased by a certain period of time, they'd be able to continue that into the future. And then the county has a transfer of development rights. I don't know if they specifically call it that, but it's equivalent to transfer development rights program. And that's where you have, you're eligible for development, say a single family on one parcel, and you're able to transfer it to another parcel. So you would lose it on that parcel, but gain it on another property. And they have a, a lot of criteria about, uh, you know, lands that were, are eligible for kind of this transfer, uh, that we don't need to get into. But, um, they wanted to make an amendment within the area city impact that, uh, only allow transfers of eligible parcels outside the area city impact, not inside or within. So you would, you know, you could.
So you wouldn't have any hopscotching?
Yeah, you could take, uh, a building, essentially a building right, and transfer that outside area city impact, but you couldn't transfer a bunch in or exchange.
Transfer it out.
Yeah. Yeah. And then, uh, you know, I mean, county's fairly rural, so they don't have off-street parking requirements typically as far as the development of those facilities. And so, they would, uh, you know, include this within the section about going through and, and having a plan drawn to scale, approved prior to any building permit that needs it, has to be adequate to fully serve the use, show dimensions, shall a minimum include the following? And then just kind of the standard items that you typically see in a parking plan. Spaces, circulation, access, landscaping, fences, screening, grading, signs, bumper guards, markings, ADA, parking spaces, stormwater retention areas, so.
So this is what we're proposing be? Or they've already adopted this?
This is what is in the current, uh, it, the proposed agreement.
Okay, so it hasn't, it's, when, so it hasn't been, um, adopted yet?
It hasn't, no.
Okay.
No, it, we'll get through kind of the timeline here at the end.
Okay.
But it's the, yeah, county, county commissioners that conduct the public hearing. And so, um, word is here tonight to give a recommendation as to whether or not they should approve this. Um, and then county reserves right to require parking lot or space be engineered to meet requirements. And then, uh, they states that they shall be improved to meet all city standards upon annexation, if not required, to be built to those standards at the time of construction. And then they don't have, uh, buffer yard requirements, so it would be inserting some of those requirements that we typically have between zones. I mean, there's not a lot of zone to zone within the area city impacts since you have so much ag forest, but you do have those areas that are more of the suburban residential up against the rural residential, up against ag forest, uh, that you'd want to put a buffer yard. So it's similar to what our buffer yard requirements are, type A or type B buffers. Um, and they specify more detail in the, in the agreement. Garbage dumpster area, dumpster areas are required. Outdoor lighting's required to be full cutoff. Subdivisions, currently there's a section, uh, that they're required to dedicate public right-of-way in accordance with the city thoroughfare plan. So if we have a subdivision, uh, currently that's in the area city impact, and we can't provide services to that property, they end up subdividing in the county, which we've had a couple of those over the years. But they need to dedicate right-of-way sufficient enough for us to put a road through consistent with our thoroughfare plan because we show it being a future collector, arterial. They don't have to develop it, it's essentially just they have to dedicate the right-of-way in order for us to be able to get the road through at some point in the future when we do end up growing up there. And then administration, county retains all authority in the area city impact. And then, uh, there's a thirty-day notice given to the city to provide comments on hearings in the area city impact. And so, um, that'll essentially just go to staff now that will provide, uh, input. Used to go to Board of Adjustment, they'd give a recommendation onto the county. Or some circumstances, it would go to P and Z, they'd give a recommendation, uh, in a public hearing. Now it's just thirty-day notice given to the city, and we have an opportunity to provide comments on the hearing. So the county planning commission, uh, meeting is proposed on October seventh. I think they're going to discuss this. And then the county public hearings are anticipated in November twenty twenty-five. That's before the county commissioners. And, uh, staff here recommends, the commission recommend approval of the agreement to Leittot County.
There you go. That's a lot. We asked a lot of questions along the way.
So basically, before, when the county allowed the city to pretty much determine, requirements in the area of city impact, so now the county does it. But we're, basically, we're recommending what we had recommended before. When, when the area of city impact. They would say, okay, go, you have to go by what the city says. But now they don't, but are we basically recommending the things that we had included before?
We, we have a lot of the things that we have included before, yeah.
Okay.
There's, I can't really identify other than, other than like the specific parking standards.
I think the thoroughfare type part. Cause, cause I can remember discussing, oh, so the county decides to allow, uh, houses to, to face each other across a little lane. And then if they ever got annexed, there's no place to put the utilities because the houses are too close together. So in the area of impact, we had said that, no, it has to be, you have to dedicate enough land just in case. So that's the type of thing that we're still asking or recommending.
With, with the thoroughfare plan, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I mean, the county, so nothing's going to change as far as the county still has ultimate authority there. We've always just made a recommendation. It's just that, yeah, now we have to adopt the county's plans, whereas before we adopted essentially all of the, most of the city's plans. And so, I mean, the thought there was that if we adopt all the city's plans in the area city impact, when those properties do end up getting annexed, they're not going to be non-conforming. They're already going to meet kind of all city requirements. And so, I, you know, I think working through this and getting the comparable zones and uses, I think we're covered in a lot of this. It's just a lot, you know, we have a lot of detail, like in our parking lot standards, for instance, the, you know, theirs are, are fairly general. Actually, they don't even have any parking lot standards in the county. So, um, that's why we have to insert those kind of general requirements there and then it be brought up to full compliance. But I think we'll still recommend that, uh, you know, these properties, we, fair, I guess, first of all, we don't really have a whole lot of parking lots that are developed in the area city impact. The only ones potentially would be out on kind of South Ninety-Five, the Old Ninety-Five, in that area, if they were to be developed within the area city impact. So I can't really think of any other than maybe Molly's property has the, um, auto detailing business that was eventually annexed. So that was initially developed in the county, not a big parking lot in the front. But we could, no, yeah, some of that stuff's there. So, you know.
We don't have to hold public hearings on proposals in.
Yeah, that, that's the other change is that there's no obligation to do that. They just are obligated to give us thirty-day notice as to a hearing, and then we would provide comment just like another property owner, you know, in that area. So, yeah, that's a, a big change. But, uh, in the end, regardless of what our recommendation would be, even if, if it was coming from P and Z, or if it was coming from Board of Adjustment, or if it was coming from staff, they could still do whatever they wanted in the area city impact anyway. They could take our recommendation and sustain it, or they could reverse it, or.
Well, it looks like you came up with a really good list.
Uh, you know, I think, I, yeah, I'll give credit to Michelle Fussin at the county. She done, had done pretty much the lion's share of a lot of this, so.
Okay, you think, you might, anyone, any questions for Mike? Anything else? We answered a lot along the way, but.
What, do we have to do anything at this point?
Uh, we're just mainly, you know, it was, uh, you know, we wanted to run it by Planning and Zoning Commission just to go over everything. And I mean, even though we're not, we weren't obligated to do so, uh, but it would be nice to, yeah, give a recommendation that the council or the commission recommends, uh, adoption of the agreement.
So, so will we not see anything in the area impact anymore then?
Well, we will as staff, but just P and Z and Board of Adjustment won't, no.
Sorry, I know you said that, but.
I am a bit concerned about the excluded properties where development may well.
Yeah.
Occur, but we're.
We'll be cutting up.
Have to be excluded because. I can't see that there's much we can do about it.
Exactly.
I can see why, partly why commissions now don't really have any say because there's so many towns that don't have any commissions. You know, all they have is maybe two guys as a city council, even if that. And so the county basically makes all the decisions because that's all there is.
Victoria, you're quiet over there. Nothing, huh?
But you want us to make a recommendation to adopt what you've put forward?
Yes.
Well, staff, right, I mean, yeah. Yeah, any other questions?
Well.
Anyone?
I'll move we adopt, that we make a reg, have a resolution because we can't adopt anything. I would sort of have a resolution that, is that, would that be the right word?
Recommend the adoption of the agreement?
There you go. There you go.
So moved? In a second. Okay, Mike, is that good?
Oh, you're good.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, we'll start with Victoria.
Aye.
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 That's it for that, Mike, right?
It is, yep.
Okay, Joel, you're on the hot block again here for the transportation.
The last meeting of the transportation provision was September eleventh. The main item of discussion was the, uh, need to update the multimodal transportation, uh, plan, you know, basically, uh, the plan in.
Basically, the plan in place that I believe dates back like 10 years. And it needs to be updated because it, well, certainly a updated multimodal plan is useful in grant applications and so on. The next meeting of the transportation commission is on October 9th. And I haven't seen an agenda.
I was sewing this weekend and one of the ladies, her husband is legally blind, but he's also deaf. And he was, there were also, there was kind of some discussion about the stoplights and things in town having like what Spokane has where it says walk, don't walk or whatever. And also saying that the ped drops don't line up with the crosswalks. The ped drops kind of go with the slope, but they don't line up with the crosswalk. So I, I know nothing about it, but I just know that she said her husband has to walk everywhere and he walks with a cane, but seeing, I don't know, I don't know what can be done, but, but, but for other people, for ones that are visually impaired, having the, the walk, don't walk, talking.
I would note that Pullman does have a number of talking.
They do.
Signs for crossings. The issue of alignment with crosswalks is.
I don't know, I haven't checked it out.
All right. It's, I think it's, I think it is an issue. I, I watch so many people walk to the park and there are three or four gentlemen that are blind have these white sticks. And every now and then they get confused at the corner and, you know, because the, like you say, that it doesn't line up with the sidewalk.
With the sidewalk, yeah. So as you're discussing multimodal.
Well, that is the alignment of the ped drops and the crosswalks, something that is, is this industry standard?
I don't know.
I don't know.
That's why I'm saying handing it to your lovely commission.
Yeah, I've wondered about it and I, I saw, actually, the wildest thing happened on the corner. This fellow with his white stick was across the street over there kind of wandering. You could just see that he was really confused. And a lady just stopped her car in the middle of Third, jumped out of her car and came over and sort of, she was a heroine.
There we go.
And the fellow and said, no, there's the sidewalk right there. You can just hit that way. Okay. And he headed off. But there must be something at the corners.
Yeah, I don't know.
Difficult for feel, to feel.
He's a city engineer now.
He's got a ball trigger.
Oh, okay.
Absolutely, and drainage is an issue.
It's really hard to get those ped drops right. They, I mean, how many times have we redone them in downtown Moscow? It's really hard to hit percentages perfectly.
Yeah.
Anything lined up is very difficult. And I think that's just where the different disabilities cross paths, right?
Yeah.
Like some people are in a wheelchair and they need to be able to go straight directions.
Right.
Can't go too steep or whatever. And then somebody who's blind wants it to go straight. I mean, I think that's just difficult.
Park my car up by City Hall here and I get something heavy at Moscow Farmers Market and pull one of the coaster wagons. I'm, I'm looking for a ped drop and not going across the crosswalk, so.
Anyway.
Multimodal.
Multimodal.
I was walking with you.
Walking.
Yeah, if you can see.
Hambling.
And being able to see is a blessing, no doubt about it. Yeah.
Well, what I noticed is cars don't see pedestrians. They just don't see them.
No. And I couldn't find my little flashing lights tonight, so I'm going to flash my phone. But yeah, it.
They don't see you.
It takes that.
It, it helps if two, two pedestrians are at the crosswalk at the same time, then they might see you. They just don't see you.
Well, at least you have light colored hair so they can see that.
Joel, you say they don't, but I, it's a mixed bag because it freaks me out. Because I'm on a corner, I often walk around my place and it's shocking. If you get within 30 feet of the corner, people are putting on their brakes.
Well, that's great.
And, and you know, and they, they really, and I'm going like waving them on or hiding behind a tree until, so.
That varies from place to place for sure.
You know, there's clearly two, two kinds of drivers.
I mean, some people do see you, but there's.
I'd say the young people are probably that go fast are a little tricky.
All I have to do is show this and traffic stops.
Yeah, or threaten to. Okay. All right, well, that's for the transportation.
Anyway, thanks, thanks again.
Thanks, Joel. Any announcements, Mike?
No, from staff.
How about upcoming events or meetings? Next, next meeting?
I think we'll probably plan on canceling that. I don't think we have anything.
Oh.
Anyone have anything else they would like to add before we depart? Okay, we'll adjourn then. Thanks, everyone.